All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Wayham Zoning Board Appeal for tonight's agenda. It is August 24th, 2019. Sorry, July 24th, 2019. It's 6:30 PM. I'm gonna make a call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far left, Attorney General Kendrick. As your associate member, Walter Cruz, myself. The Chair, Nazir Al-Khulasi. My far right, Associate Robert Haskell, Veronica Devenez, and our Clerk, Jim Akabachi. We're gonna do quick business for minutes. Do some minutes. Okay. All right, so we have the minutes for July 10, 2019.
I actually have not had a chance to review them.
I usually have, but tonight I have not. So can we put this off to the end so I can get a chance to make sure there's no errors?
Yeah, we'll table that to the end.
And I'll look at it in between.
Twenty-nine dash sixteen, extension for special permit for Amado, 312 Once Avenue. Hey, Brian. You have the black. I guess he is requesting a can.
An extension.
An extension. He didn't file an application, just an extension.
Just a letter requesting an extension.
Just a letter.
All right, so I don't have a... We have, we've had a little change in the office, which I'm sure you're aware of.
I am aware of that, yes.
Your folder here. You need an extension. We can vote on it without your folder.
All right, I wanna let Jim chair this one because I have a conflict with Brian, and he has no wonder to present the case.
Is this twenty-nine sixteen?
Yeah.
You're talking about? Okay, like I said, we don't have... All we're doing is extending, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're requesting the extension?
On behalf of Mr. Amado, who resides in California. He's looking to build this dwelling so that he can move back here. So I don't know if you have the letter that I provided. I believe he's made substantial use of his permit. He was at the point where he had hired the general contractor to put the foundation in and build the home. But with the long-distance communication, the contractor was given a deposit. But in the last several months, communication has fallen off with this contractor, who is either unable or unwilling to perform the work. So he's at a standstill until he's able to hire a new contractor. And as you know, things are quite busy. And with the short period remaining on the permit, he's unable to do that. So I... But I'm just being safe here to get the extension because I believe, like I said, he's made substantial use of the permit. He has retained us. We have received all approvals from Conservation Commission. We've received prior approval from you for the special permit. We've received historic demolition permit. The house has been razed. There was asbestos abatement performed prior to that. The house has been razed. The hole's been filled and backfilled and stabilized. And he was at the point where he's ready to build. And the contractor no longer is in contact with him. So he's potentially pursuing legal action to get return of the deposit and retain another contractor so that he could commence.
So he's just asking that the special permit that has been granted be extended?
Yes, it expires in a month's time.
It expires? Okay. I'm working without the folder, so.
Understand.
It's 312 Once Avenue.
Correct.
And it's Amado. Would you spell it for me?
A-M-A-D-O.
What's his, what's his first name?
Keith.
Okay, so you're looking to extend... You're not looking to extend the meeting. You're looking to extend the special permit.
Yes, extend one year for the approval of the extension of the special permit. Correct.
And do you know the date of the original hearing by any chance?
It was originally approved the...
I mean, I know it happened back in sixteen.
The original approval's dated July 30th. It was recorded.
July 30th, sixteen?
Nope, sorry. That's... It was August. Recorded at the clerk, August 22nd of sixteen was the 20-day appeal period. So August 22nd of sixteen.
And we want to extend out to when?
The end of August 2020.
That's all just a month.
Yeah, one-year extension.
August 22nd again, 2019?
2020.
Okay. And today is 7:24. Do I have any comments from the board regarding this?
I have none.
Any reason not to grant an extension? Anybody here from the public that feels aggrieved with this request? Any comments for or against? If you would sign the application for me, I'll turn it in without the folder. This isn't the right form, but we got the right information. We'll take it from there. If I can get a nom... If I can get a motion from the board, from somebody on the board to... This isn't this, though, is it? Okay. If I can get a motion from anybody on the board to grant an extension for one year and a second, we can vote on it. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very well. I'm gonna go forward to twenty-nine dash eleven, request for reinstatement of a variance. Karan Johar, 189 Marion Road. Okay, Mr. Johar is not here, but there's a letter here. Because we never signed that.
Okay, that's all this needs to be signed.
From Dunbar.
Which one is this?
At the Farm Mechanic, the parking lot.
Somebody went in. Anybody else need to sign it?
No.
We got you. Okay, I think we got them all.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, just when this is for.
This is for the record?
Yeah.
Dated July 24th to the zoning board from Ken Buckland, town manager, regarding Brown's Package Store Incorporated, 189 Marion Road. ZBA petition twenty-nine dash eleven and currently thirty-two dash nineteen issue. Brown's Package Store has applied for an additional commercial use pizza shop within their building. An application has been submitted and is scheduled for public hearing in August. Brown's was originally approved under a special permit for use and a variance for signs in 2011. I was told by the owner that they had proposed a pizza shop as part of the 2011 permit. With this information, I suggested they write a letter requesting considerations of the previous permissions and reinstatement of the permit rather than public hearing. Findings, I believe that this abbreviated action of no public hearing is not permissible. One, there was no previous variance for use as currently required by the building commissioner. Two, there is no record of a pizza shop in the previous project file.
All right.
So they're not here anyway, right?
They're not here, however, just for the records. If a variance was granted, there's a statute limitation for one year. And as the commissioner, or I guess Mr. Buckland, stated, they don't see a permit. Brownies was approved with a variance. I remember that case very well. And a variance is good only for one year. So even if they were approved for a pizza shop, that statute, that one year lapses. So regardless, they're gonna need a new variance.
So they need, they need to reapply?
They need to apply, and it's a variance, not a special permit.
So they're requesting a reinstatement, and we cannot grant it. So do we need to officially deny it?
There was no, there's no, there's nothing to reinstate because there's no record of a pizza shop.
Just send the word back that they need to do an official application.
Official application.
Okay.
All right, so we're just gonna, I guess, make a vote that they need to apply from scratch.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Okay, very well. I'm just gonna jump quickly to continue public hearing for ninety-six realty. I'll see, counsel, I just wanna hold, don't hold you up. I guess we still have until August 16. Mr. Morrison will be reinstated next Tuesday, so you'll have a full member. I'm hoping, Bob, just for the record, as I stated before many times, for every hearing, I've stated on the fourteen, August 14, I'm not here. So if you guys, are you guys gonna be here in August 14? You're not?
No.
Is that the next meeting, August 14? Okay.
Don't we have a full board tonight?
The problem, I accused myself before in that matter.
They're reclosed anyway.
I can't, I can't get back in, and you can't sit on it.
I know, I can't sit on it.
So he has a four-board members.
Full-member board. He needs all four of us to say yes, and if one...
Two. So unless... So I'll be here August 14 to say hello.
Is August 14 isn't gonna work either for the...
No.
We won't have a board.
I know, but it's, you're gonna have to wait for that moment. Maybe Jen shows up.
I can't do it until then.
My mother is coming.
We can't predict anything until August 14, so.
Okay.
All right.
So we're gonna extend to, we're gonna continue until August 15, uh, 14?
We never opened the hearing.
Yes, you did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, you did. Very first meeting.
Thirty-three eighteen, right?
In fact, I think you opened the second meeting again, too.
We opened, and the applicant chose not to open with four members.
Well, you only had, you know, when you opened, you only had three people.
Right. All right. So we don't need this.
We're gonna need a motion to continue till the 14.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
August what?
Fourteen.
That's five zero zero, right?
Can I get a word for a minute on that?
Can you do what?
Can I get a word for a moment on that?
No.
Motion to move forward. My name is Eric Lintola.
Hold on one second. On that very, very case?
Yes.
Can't unfortunately.
He's already gone.
Well, it's obvious the next meeting, there's not gonna be another quorum.
I do understand, but...
And so this will be passing by default. And how many times we've had these meetings? And every time, there's not been a quorum of voters here.
I do totally understand what you're saying and send your frustration, but we, I don't make the rules. I do understand, and I'm sorry, we can't discuss it. It's, the, the hearing is not open.
Well, I can understand that.
The thing is, I can't sit on it because previously I recused myself.
I understand that.
Mrs. Devenez can't sit on it. She has a conflict. And the applicant has the right not to open the hearing with four members.
So it's an unusual circumstance, though, that it keeps, it keeps falling, gets passed down, and it will pass by default. And this is something that obviously has been brought forward, that it shouldn't pass. And yet, it's gonna pass by default.
I understand. We don't know if it should pass or shouldn't. Until it's heard, we don't under, we don't...
Until you have everyone here who can vote, and you're not, obviously, the next meeting because that's it by that point, is it not? It will pass after that.
I believe if it passes by default, then you still have the 20-day appeal period to challenge.
You can still challenge.
You can still challenge the decision.
However, we have a member getting reinstated next Tuesday, and we hope him, again, publicly, we are short members. If somebody who ever hearing this would like to be on the zoning board to come forward and apply to be a member on the zoning board, so we are short for members.
Yeah, I would just last, I'd just say, it, it's a little bit unusual. It's, it's the responsibility, and I know the hard work you folks do, but to keep coming up with a short on votes.
What's your suggested solution?
It's your, it's your committee. It's your board. You have to figure that out. How do you, how do you possibly, you know, get things passed or not passed? You can't vote on it. This is an issue that's been kicked. How many meetings?
You're not giving me solutions. You're giving me questions. What's your suggested solution?
I don't have a solution for it. That's something for you to figure out.
Let me tell you something. We could discuss board members and attendance and quorum. You're gonna have to wait to the end of the hearing. We cannot discuss this case anymore. I mean, we'll get in big trouble if we discuss this matter. I'm sorry. I don't make the rules.
Understood.
And there's rules and regs. We can't just buy them.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, you could hang around. We could discuss issues like this, but not this case.
Okay.
It'll be in about a half an hour. We do have an, like, something reserved, like, we never anticipated to hear. We could hear. If you wanna hang around, we could talk about it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
You gonna go back up here, and you wanna let these people? They've been here half of us times already.
Direct? No, we can't.
Okay.
Twenty-six dash nineteen, Kelly and Denise Walk, 15 Howard Street.
Ready to read it in?
Yes, please.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on July 24th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number twenty-six dash nineteen for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table 625 in Article 14, Section 1470 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Kelly and Denise Walk, 63 Coming Street, Attleboro, Mass., 02703, seeking to construct a 10-foot-by-14-foot storage shed in the front yard of the property located at 15 Howard Street, Wayham, Mass., assesses map 50, what, D246 in the R30 zoning district.
You name an address for the record, ma'am.
Denise Walk, 63 Coming Street, Attleboro, Massachusetts.
All right, wanna let us know?
Own the property at 15 Howard.
Thank you. You wanna let us know what you, what you plan?
We own a, a property that backs up to a saltwater marsh, so we don't really have a backyard. And the side yard is on quite a severe slope, so there's not really an opportunity to locate a shed on the side yard. So we're requesting a variance so that we can locate a storage shed toward the front of the property.
What zone are you in?
MR30.
MR30.
According to the public record, public notice.
Okay. All right, I'm just gonna pass it to the board members. Robert, do you have a question on that?
No.
Veronica?
Do you have any pictures of the property? I'm sorry? Do you have any pictures?
Yeah, there, um, there was one on the map of the property.
The last page, it's folded.
The front of it's been somewhat altered because we're also, we've also done an addition, so the front looks a little different now. Sorry, I have it.
Okay, thank you.
So the proposed deck, I mean, shed is the green, ma'am?
Correct. Correct. And then, um, we got a notice from the Conservation Commission that where we had thought about citing it in this map, it might be too close to the flood line, the historic flood line. So the question becomes, is it possible to locate it 10 feet back from the fence, the front of the property line, rather than set back as far as the 33 feet that it's showing on this map?
So you wanna at 23 feet?
Between 23 and, and 10. The, the reason why we're asking to set it that far forward is it actually is less of an impedance on our neighbor's view. If we put it closer to the street, then we actually have it located on this little map. And so we're, we're trying to both balance not impeding anybody's view and have appropriate storage for the house because once the construction we're currently doing is done, we're gonna move in and become full-time residents here. If, can I approach? Because I have another map that we did.
While you're approaching, is anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against?
This is, after appearing from the Conservation Commission, it might be too far. This is a very steep bank, and this is kind of the flood line. We would think that we, maybe we could put it here, so it's 10 feet from the, from the fence that borders the street, 10 feet from the other neighbor.
That's too close.
Is that too far? Okay. Or, or maybe do that. We're trying to make this as easy as possible.
All right, I understand. I'll, I'll explain it to you quick. Where is the wet land? Have you, oh, it's right. You have more than 30 feet. All right, I understand.
But this is, but this is a very steep slope.
I understand.
Okay.
All right, you could have a seat.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Mrs., what's her name? Mrs. Howe?
Looks like a six-foot chain.
Mrs. Walk?
Walk.
Walk.
Mrs. Walk. All right. Well, as you all understand, the variance need to prove a hardship. Hardship not detrimental to the neighborhood, unique. And I do believe she does have a hardship because the hardship clearly speaks about shape, type of soil, and topography of the land. In that matter, she has a steep topography. So I believe she does have a hardship. Does that make sense? Because apparently putting the shed on a steep bank doesn't work. However, the 33 feet does work. She's gonna have to file with Conservation. But, and apparently she's doing, applying for variance because a shed cannot be in front of the house.
Right.
That's the whole idea. But like I said, she does have a hardship because topography and type of soil. I'll keep hearing for members. Jen, what do you think?
I agree with you.
Walter?
Um, I mean, I'm fine with it as it's shown on this plan with the 33 feet. I've done sheds on steep things.
Yeah.
There's ways of doing it. If you have a contract, they can put a footing and put piers.
Right. We're planning on doing that.
And it would actually set over the raised area, so it would actually be back. But if, to me, that would be a lot more inconvenience for her, so I would be fine with this 33 feet.
Okay.
You know? So I would think it was a hardship, yeah.
So which, um, the shed has four sides. Two sides have doors. Which way are the doors gonna face? To the house and to the street? To the house and to the wa, rear?
I... She has it on the map. I mean, on the, excuse me, on the plans.
They, they show which way the doors face?
Mm-hmm. It does.
Street facing in. Okay, I see it.
Yeah, the yard facing side. The street facing in will have a door, the yard, the, the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And you got a fence here. Okay.
Right.
Okay, no, no more questions.
She does meet setbacks anyway.
She meet, yeah.
She meets setbacks. It's only because a shed cannot be placed in front of the house. Bob, you wanna add anything? Veronica?
No, I have no problem with it.
So hearing, anyone else would like to add anything?
There's no neighbors here complaining.
No. So hearing none, let's move to closer.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Here was the mission on variance.
Make a motion to grant, as presented on the plan. She gave us three different ones, but this one. This one.
The 33. Well, I, because the Conservation Commission came back indicating that we might be too close to the edge of the flood line, that's why we suggested moving it a little closer to the street.
But you can do it. You can file with them. You're not too close. You have more than 30 feet.
Okay.
You just have to file with them.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna use by plan dated July...
July 3.
Okay.
This one's July 3, too. However, the July 3 with the setback of 33 feet from the street, 10 feet from the neighbors, that's the one we're going by.
Not detrimental.
MGL, section 10 of the matters. Like I said, we're gonna say the setback, 30.
I get 33.
33 and 10. I would recommend you do 10 feet, 6 inches, just in case you're off. Then you need another variance, which is, will be hard to get.
Okay.
So have your contractor put it...
10 feet, 6 inches from the fence from the side.
On the side. 10 feet, 4 inches, to be safe.
Will do.
All right, so that's, who's making this motion?
I move to grant a variance. Again, set, plan dated July 3 showing a setback of 33 feet from the front and 10 feet from the side.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Okay, 500. The carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, hang here. Let's sign it.
I'm gonna go to my right first. Let you two guys sign first.
I gave you my schedule. In my packet.
What do you need?
I think it's on the top.
Yes, oh, this. Another one coming back.
Jen, can I have it back in? Oh, yeah, here.
Another one coming back. Got two of them here.
All right, 27 dash 19, Dr. Bryan Fort, 21 Sandwich Road. Wanna come forward?
Sign?
Sign.
Wanna sign and, sign and, yeah. Sign and send it with the folder.
Just give us a minute, doctor. Jim, should we put the thing in here?
This goes in there, yeah. That's why I was sending the folder, so that we'd stay with it, but, but sure. You guys found a way to screw it up.
What are we gonna do with this folder?
Which one? That, that's the one that we just had to sign? Okay. I'm gonna put it, okay.
Put it inside this, I'll call out later.
No, no, outside and standing up there. I gotta wait. We gotta...
It's okay. We only need five. It's okay. I know we signed six, that's fine.
It's okay. You can have more signatures. You can't have one.
Oh, okay.
Ready? Yeah, before I do, one, two. One, two, three. We're gonna give you a drum roll when we finally get to this, I think.
PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 27-19 for a use variance from the requirements of MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Article 3, Section 313, and Article 14, Section 1471 of the Wayham Zoning Bylaws to Dr. Bryan Foot, DMD, 83 Pearl Street, Hyannis, Mass. 02601, seeking to convert an existing building previously used as a daycare into a dental office located at 21 Sandwich Road, Wayham, Mass. That's on assesses map 45, Lot F67 in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Okay, before we start forward, I guess Veronica can say in this matter, we still have five board members. Mr. Haskell, we vote for Veronica's seat, so we still have five board members. We continue for five. Okay, so do you want to just name and address for the records and let us know what you're doing, sir, doctor?
Brian Foot, I don't know, what, you want my home address or where I work here? 45 Main Street, Wayham.
All right, very well. And your plan is to, I guess...
My plan was to relocate my office from where it exists presently, where I've been for 32 years, to 21 Sandwich Road.
Okay, very well. All right, so as you all know, this area, is this area in the Wayham Village?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up a point. I don't think it's an important point, but I think I'm gonna bring it up for everybody's edification. I'm looking at the zoning map, and I disagree with the public announcement that it's located in the Commercial Strip Zoning District. The property, in fact, I believe, is located in an MR30 district. Across the street from it is zoned Wayham Village. To the left of it is zoned Wayham Village, but it itself is zoned MR30 even though the public announcement says Commercial Strip.
I'm okay with the notice.
I am too. I just wanted everybody to know, be aware of it.
Does anyone in the audience have an issue with this matter, with the announcement? It's a typo. Okay, we'll proceed then. All right, just, I'm very familiar with the property. It used to be a daycare, so pretty much commercial use. And this whole area is turning, not too long ago, if you all recall, the hilltop, we converted the doctor's office as well to a dentist. Do you remember that, Jen?
Yes, I do.
They're doing, they seem to be doing a fine job on the property. I go by it on a daily basis.
So, so I guess Dr. Foot would like to relocate his practice to this place, and he's here before us to see if we allow this move. I just want to let you know, if the variance is granted, you're gonna have to go to a site plan.
Okay.
You will come back to us about the site plan because...
Now, do I have to do that? I'm not really changing the structure. I'm not knocking it down.
Right.
I'm just doing some interior work and cosmetic on the outside.
How many parking spaces you have outside? Over nine?
Well, over that.
Yeah.
It used to be, it used to be an orthopedic office prior to it being a daycare, and where they, where they, there's parking spots on the right-hand side of the building, which I think is the, if faces north, it's, then that would be the east. And then there's also a smaller parking lot on the left side of the building, but in the back of the building, where they have playground area for the kids, that used to be, and I'm pretty sure, I've never checked, but I think there's, that's blacktop underneath the woodships that they have. So, in the old orthopedic office, you used to come in on the right side, park, and exit on the left side. So that, there was a big, huge rectangle of parking. And for the size of the building, I'm quite sure that I have more than enough parking. I would have more than enough parking.
Yeah, you do, yeah. But you're gonna have to file a plan, you're gonna change the site? You're gonna move this playground, I believe?
You're gonna eliminate the playground and turn it back into a parking lot?
I don't know exactly whether I'm gonna turn it into a parking lot. I haven't gotten that far, but I'm gonna eliminate the playground.
Okay, so we're just gonna have, you're just gonna have to submit plans, how you're laying out the parking, or what you're doing with the outside.
Okay.
Just the fact, because it's a variance, so the variance is to grant, it used to be orthopedic, so we're gonna grant back this variance.
Okay.
I'm sure they had a variance before, so we're just gonna reinstate it kinda. But like I said, you're gonna need some sort of plan, how you're laying out your parking and stuff.
As far as I understood it was MR30 is zoned for medical and hospitals. A dentist's office is not classified as that.
You're thinking it may be in allowed use already.
I don't think it is. You know, for some reason, they classify a dental office as different than a doctor's office. This is my understanding. Yeah, all the plumbing...
You're a doctor of, you're MD...
And all the plumbing, all the electrical, all the infection control is the exact same thing that they use in any hospital in America. So, why there's a difference, I'm not sure, but I think that's why I'm asking for the variance, for the change of usage.
Getting this through is gonna be like pulling teeth, isn't it?
It's gonna be like that. Although that's sometimes very easy.
Yeah.
Why can't I find the definition?
SPZ, what do you...
What page do you have it on?
That's MR30.
It's allowed use.
It's in allowed use.
Medical-related facility.
Well, he's saying that he's not medical, he's a dentist.
Well, that's what Ken's interpretation is.
I don't know, do you do haircuts?
That's what I was told.
I know, I know. I'm just finding it as humorous as you must.
So, hospital, medical-related facility.
Hospital or medical, this thing, oh.
Which is allowed in the MR30.
There's a letter from the building inspector.
Prison one. But, I'm going back to my original observation. They had it as CS. It's MR30.
It doesn't. It's just a...
Well, no, it's looking at the use table, what's allowed and what's not.
Let me ask you something. Who sent you here?
Ken.
It's allowed in CS too.
I think so. The town planner, Ken? I didn't meet him. My wife did, or the real estate agent said that, said that it wasn't zoned for this.
Yeah, I'm saying a yes, no matter how it's zoned.
My opinion will...
The difference is the definition. They're relying on the definition to say that as defined in our bylaws, dentist office doesn't fall under medical.
It does say that in the definition.
I'm trying to find the definition. For some reason, I can't.
Okay.
But that's the issue.
With all respect, you're a MD, right? You could write a prescription.
Well, I'm, yeah, I can write a prescription.
You're DMV.
Well, I'm thinking, there is a, you know, obviously, there's a difference. You know, they, they go to medical school, I go to dental school.
Commercial use does not have hospital or medical listed, so he would...
It's MR30.
It's MR30.
It's MR30. Right, so I'm saying that's the reason for the letter.
Exactly.
No, I thi...
Because it's not an allowed use for commercial.
A commercial use.
You think Ken had the wrong, was ref...
It's MR30.
You think Ken was referring to the wrong...
We don't have a letter from Ken, do we?
Right, but he sent them here, by Ken referring to commercial.
Be in this little bundle that I handed you.
I didn't, I didn't have it.
Oh, you didn't get one? You want one?
I got the, I didn't get, there's no letter from Ken in there.
Yeah, okay, I didn't think I saw one.
And I, for some reason, can't find the hospital or other medical use definition.
So you've been upstairs at British Landing for 33 years?
32.
32 years, and you own that unit, and you're gonna, are you expanding your practice? Are you just, I'm just...
I'm gonna expand it because my children want to come.
You put them through dental school, and now they're gonna come?
One of them is in, the other one's probably starting in September, she's applying, and then the third one probably in a couple more years.
All right.
I don't see where, I'm sorry, Nazee. I don't see where medical or other hospital, hospital or other medical-related use is defined, and based on a common sense interpretation of that definition. Absent something to the contrary, I would say that there's no variance.
Right. All right, so my suggestion, we overrule the town planner letter, and based on the table, the use table on section 320 table, I guess, 320, under MR30, hospital, medical-related facilities, nursing home, immediate care center, daycare center, all these things are allowed use in MR30, and based on the note, on the...
What do we got under Article 3, 313? Is that this? Is that the use table? 3, 313?
Use regulations, yes.
3, yeah.
So what do we got? Article 14, Section 1471. Is there anything there to sign on, sir?
Where's that, Jen?
Article 14, Section 1471. That's what's listed in...
Use variance.
Use variance. It just says that we have the power to grant a use variance.
That's right.
I believe. But let's make sure.
It's a use variance.
It's just saying...
They both like kind of work together. All right, so my opinion, we overturned the town planner decision, send Dr. Foot back. It is an allowed use by right as the table in MR30, the use table in MR, in the use table, section 320. So if you guys agree with me, somebody make a motion.
I move.
I agree. I think it's also important preemptively to note that unless, unless there's, my book is not the most recent, my bylaws are not the most recent bylaws, there's also, even if Ken intended to say MR30, and as Dr. Foot noted, his understanding was that the interpretation was that a dentist office was general office, not hospital or other medical use, that seems to me to be the issue that he will have to contend with if we don't otherwise make this finding, would be that because hospital, there's, because hospital or other medical use is not defined in such a way, it's not defined at all that I can find, that excludes dentistry. I think a common sense understanding of that term would, one would, would lead one to conclude that dentistry falls under hospital or other medical use.
Right.
Not general office.
I mean, I don't mind granting a variance, but there's no sense.
I mean, I, I'm of the same opinion. I wouldn't mind granting a variance, and I don't...
All right, so...
So I guess if they decide you really, really need it, you're really, really gonna get it, because we all think you should.
But you won't.
But you don't need it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll just send the letter to the planner. All right, so what's, what's the wishes?
So I make a motion that we contact, send the word back to the town planner that we've reviewed this application, we find it unnecessary, and we don't agree with his decision that there's a use variance needed, and it's a use by right.
Okay, let's make a motion to close first.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any discussion? Hearing none? So we'll make a motion to overturn the town planner decision that it's a variance, and it's allowed by right. Somebody make the motion.
I made the motion. Somebody can second it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haskell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Thank you. Thank you, doc.
Thank you. Thank you.
So do we need to write anything on this here that...
Just say overturn.
Yep.
And we'll sign it. All right. Do we have all these back?
Oh, sorry. There you go.
I was thinking that when you...
He talking about the garage.
Well, he still may need a site plan.
Yeah, and the other one, it was never used as a med office, but it doesn't matter. Too late now.
No, how would you happen to look at the fact that it was MR30, not the commercial as noted?
I just, local knowledge. I just...
It's on the plan, he has a zoning map. I thought it was a Wayham Village.
Well, yeah, I saw it, and I s...
Is it currently vacant?
I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's vacant, and again, I'm gonna pass to you guys for signatures first. It's vacant.
Ronnie, not you.
Oh, right.
What do you need to see?
I thought you could...
You're welcome. It's kind of funny, because when it was a childcare, it prevented a marijuana establishment across the street, because it was a childcare, and it couldn't, and a marijuana establishment couldn't exist across the street.
I see where you're going, yeah.
So that's why, that's why I just happened to...
All right, we're gonna go continue public hearing, 24-19, Derek Encaliborasso, 17 Chashma Road. Just a name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Barrasso.
Derek Barrasso.
Heather Wells.
Nicholas Lewis.
All right, public hearing's still open from last time. Last time, a couple more board members had an issue about towing and auto repairs. I did personally check pretty much everyone on town. Nobody has a license for towing. It comes, I guess it goes with auto repair. Wherever it goes, auto repair. Nobody has a special permit for towing, so...
You done with that?
Unless you guys find something on public record, on like a case law somewhere. Did you guys find anything?
I didn't. I looked.
Yep.
I couldn't find anything.
That's why it's up. All right, we're gonna open it to board members first, one, two, three, four, five. So last time, Mr. Haskell wasn't here, but we do have five members anyway without, were you at this case, Bob? You went?
I was here the first time you guys came in.
First time.
Yes.
Oh, the first time, okay, but...
I was here the first time.
All right, so...
No.
But we all been, Jen, you've been at all the cases?
I have.
All right, so we do have five members anyway, so, but you can make your opinion. What do you have? You want to comment on something?
I happened to go by the place, and it's clean. It's really clean. And it's been done, that type of work has been done before. I mean, the only thing in question now is the towing aspect of it. But it's clean. I was impressed when I went by there.
We were too. That's why we liked it.
It was just to see the way it had been cleaned up and everything.
And if I may add, the towing's not an all-the-time thing, you know? It could be never, it could be once, you know, in two months that a car goes there after hours. I don't, I can't predict when they're gonna break down or what hour, but it's not something that's like, you know, a schedule every night that's coming in and out of there, you know?
Just refresh my memory, though. How long was that overall garage area there for fixing cars and stuff like that?
I've owned it for 20 years, and it's been that since I've had it. And it was, Bill Dickens owned it before me, and it's probably another 10 or 20 years before that.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. I bought the, I bought the property, and a three-bay garage was there with two lifts in there, so it's been there for quite a long time.
Given this too.
In continuous use.
So there are two lifts in there already?
No, that was in the old garage.
Old garage, okay.
Ah, there's one lift in there right now.
Okay.
Brand new. Everything's new.
Is this current?
I'm a neat person, I like to...
Yes. All right, next, Veronica, do you have a comment?
Other than to say I agree with Bob about the cleanliness, I like the property, doing a good job with it, and I would hope that it stays that way.
It's my property, it's, I'm a landscape contractor, so it's not like I get a big pension, that's my livelihood, that's my retirement, so if you think I'm gonna have somebody in there that's gonna spill oil all over the place and, you know, wreck my property, it's not gonna happen, so...
Jimmy.
I'm good.
I have one other question, if I may. Looking at this, where would you bring the automobiles that were towed in?
Everything's gonna be right in the front of the building, it's, it's gonna be fenced, so you can't see the vehicles, any vehicles that are there, you won't be able to see.
So you're gonna put a fence up, excuse me, right at the street level?
Well, there's existing fence on both sides, because I own both properties.
I can see that now in the picture.
So we're just gonna come off one, one side of the fence...
L-shaped it?
And, and come, and then come back to the building.
Okay.
So they'll be able to drive in and right through.
I see, okay, thank you.
We are, we are gonna need like some plan showing the fence if it goes forward.
Okay, that's, it's no big deal, it's just a square fence.
It's gonna show on the plan.
I think the way our discussion was going last...
I mean, we're putting the fence up for the neighbors, really, so...
I think that the way that our discussion was going last meeting was that this is simply a chance and change in use that doesn't require any relief, contingent upon everyone being satisfied that towing is merely an accessory use, so I don't know if we even need to grant relief in this situation either. The whole reason this is here, Mr. Buckland's original opinion by letter, Ibro, 17, 2009, the applicant, was that this was merely a need for a change of use, and then Ken, I mean, then Mr. Requena wrote this letter that I really don't follow, and I don't think Ken did either, saying, was he saying a variance is needed?
He said so, but it's not...
Yeah, so I don't think we need to grant a variance, I think Ken was right, I think that this is something that would require a change of use permit.
It's not a, it's not a change of use, it's allowed use.
Yeah, so that was the discussion last time, if we had, were in agreement about the service definition, and we were okay with it, that we were just going to put it back and say that it was over... Right, overturn it, right. Overturn the, the letter. There's no relief to be granted. Right. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I really don't think you can say it's a change of use, because it's always been there.
Right.
No, yep, you're right, I went down the wrong road there. And I think we're all in agreement, not now.
And it is allowed use, so, so, go ahead.
In Ken's letter here...
Is it Ken or Requena?
From Ken Buckland.
Okay, what's he saying?
And this, in Ken, Ken's letter, he's saying basically what we say, that it's MR-30, it's an allowed use, I'm sorry, it's, that it's...
It's general commercial.
It's general commercial, I'm sorry, it's not MR, and yakity yak, he says that it's an allowed use as of right, but then he goes on, and he says, "I recommend that the new user apply for a change of use permit at the building department to register the business." Well, I don't think that the building department issues any change of use permits, so I'm finding that a little confusing.
I didn't understand that either.
You know, I'm finding that a little confusing, and you guys have been put through enough torture already, in my opinion. So, you know, I don't want you to go down to the building department and say, "Can I have a change of use permit?", and have them look at you like a deer stuck in the headlights.
We've already done that, we've been there, done that.
That's why we're here, we've been down that road already.
You know, I get, I get the words "register the business".
Yeah, we've already done it.
And there's a conundrum in Wareham that goes on, and, and now I'm speaking my personal opinion, but I think I'm correct on this, that you can go to the clerk's office and register a business, anybody can go to the clerk's office and say, "I wanna do business in Wareham, and I wanna register." Okay, whoopee, so you're registered with the town, and guess what, the town gets 50 bucks 'cause you said, "I registered my business."
Right, right.
You don't need to register your business if you don't want to, there's no law that says you have to register your business.
Right.
People have challenged my opinion on that, and they've been wrong.
Right.
Okay? And back in the day, the reason you registered your business is 'cause you wanted to get listed with Dun &amp; Brad Street or somebody, or, you know, there was some prestige to register in your business, yakity yak. You can get it, I've been told by different municipalities, "Oh, well, you can't get a checking account in a bank unless you register your business." Well, that's BS.
Okay.
So my point is...
We're off on a tangent here.
No, I'm not off on a tangent, and I'm not on a soapbox, my point is, I don't want these people to go back looking for...
Yeah, no, I, I...
I, I personally have tried to register a business in this town, and been I, been denied to register that business, because the building department says, "I can't sign this."
Okay.
Well, the business department doesn't have to sign it to register your business.
Yeah, I...
That's the point.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay? But I can tell you that I personally have been denied to register a business in this town, because the building department refuses to sign off. I don't want these people put through that, and I don't know how we prevent that, but that's the reason for my grandstanding.
All right, I guess I know, we know how the board feels, let's go to public. Somebody wanna speak against? Come forward, please. What's your name again, sir?
Yes, my name's Christopher Carnte, I reside at 2614 Cranberry Highway. Now, the last time that we were here, last week, I thought this was postponed because you wanted town council's opinion on some of the definitions, and I didn't hear anything about that.
Well, it was town council opinion, it's, for us to get town council opinion, sometimes we need a selectman to grant us this permission to pay the town council.
But that's why you postponed it to this week, so you could get town council.
We did, but, we did, but the thing is, now that the board feels this way, it's still not up to the, we don't need it, and regardless of the...
I disagree with this, I think it's a totally different use.
Thank you for making your comments, you disagree.
Well, I, I will, and I'm gonna give you, I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I have the floor, can I speak?
Sit down, you're interrupting yourself. Let me explain something to you, even town council opinion has no, he cannot make us, he has no impression in our vote, do you understand, whatever he comes from?
I, I understand that.
I did, I did look at personally, I looked everywhere, I looked at case laws, I talked to Ken about it, nobody were able to find something saying that towing is not part of car service, and I checked personally with every person who has a towing business in town, I checked at the town records, nobody has a permit for just towing, just a repair. So, so that was, for that reason, Mr. Buckland did not reach for town council, and in order to get a town council opinion, it always need a selectman vote for us to get our opinion, so we just, that's why we didn't take it any further, because there was no, it was pretty obvious that towing is a part of auto repair.
It is not. Motor vehicle service establishments engaged in providing structural or mechanical motor vehicle, including automobile or boat repair, washing, or service.
Question is, how is towing...
I do not believe that towing is part of that, I think it's pretty obvious that it's not part of that, and I believe that's all this company does, is just towing, they don't do any service. I have a copy of their, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, their annual report, and here it says, "Towing and transport", it does not mention anything about motor vehicle service. So I think this is a totally different use, and I'm prepared to appeal this in the land court, your decision, if you approve this.
Okay.
And I'll go through some other, I don't know, I'd like to add to my opinion and...
I would just, I'd just like to respond to your comments. I think that the issue here is that they're allowed ancillary uses, right, they're, they're uses that are properly ancillary to an allowed use. I think the interpretation here that Mr. Buckland, I believe, gave to the selectmen, who you posted inquiry to, was just that, and with respect to the printouts from their website, I think that we covered this at our last meeting, and they testified that yes, they're, they have locations in other towns, and they don't do this exact same business there, and they don't have any advertising yet for this not existing business, and unless we are just going to sit here and call them a liar, I have no reason to do that, I take them at face value for what they've described their business plans as, I don't know that webpages from other municipalities are really relevant to what they intend to do here. Those, can I just say, those corporate docs were originated almost 10 years ago when we first started this.
This was created in March of 2019.
Excuse me.
Let her finish, go ahead, ma'am.
You have to redo that every year, you don't update it until, you know, you have a different change of use, as far as a repair shop, or whatever the case may be, so, until we open a repair shop, I cannot advertise, I cannot update the, the system with the state, I can't do anything, but I don't think it's anybody's right to tell me what I'm doing, and what I'm not doing, and what my business plan was, by records that were created almost 10 years ago.
Right, and it's not his opinion here of what automotive services is, it's how the town of Wareham is using that definition, and currently, they're using that definition and tow companies are towing under it, unless...
Could I just say that, I haven't been able to say anything yet, I don't know these people, I've, I've never met these people, I don't know why they're so opposed, we're gonna do everything we can to alleviate any source, they're not even on the same street, their property is, is not, their house is over 300 feet away through pretty dense woods, I don't know what they're...
I do understand why they're opposed from the noise, which is...
Well, we can eliminate some of that, once they're on the property, they could turn off their lights and turn off their beeper.
I mean, I can go outside and hook up to my wife's truck, and do it here.
One at a time, please.
Yeah, so I, I just don't know what the real issue is.
I do, I do understand what, what's the problem, and I totally understand...
Technically...
The noise, can I finish, please, stop interrupting. The noise and everything from towing, however, unfortunately, to your neighbor, to them, to opponent, it's allowed use, whether in state of Massachusetts or town of Wareham, repair or towing, it's like coffee and cream, so I guess it works together, we couldn't find anything, even the Mrs. Debonese and Walter, who were kinda agreeing with you last time, they couldn't find anything, they, they wanted to find something, and they couldn't. I guess you do have the right, I guess under Section 17, to appeal the decision within 20 days, and I guess we go from there. Other than that, I don't know what to say.
Can I enter these into the record too?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak? No? All right, so we have two things, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna overturn the, the variance part, the building inspector letter of a variance, and we're gonna go with the special permit, and with the special permit, we have the right to put some conditions, so...
Do we even need a...
Excuse me, I don't, I don't think we need a special permit, and I, I don't want a special permit, because we don't need it, it's as of right use, it's been, it's been in continuous use, I feel that if we want to try to alleviate some of the issues, I'm willing to do that on my own, but I, I don't really feel like we need a special permit for this, so, I don't, I'd rather not even have a special permit.
But based on...
I don't think we need it.
Based on my understanding of what Ken had to say last time, he was in agreement with that, I don't know what led him down the path of a, path of a change of use permit after saying in his letter that...
You didn't make the, the original letter Dave Requena did at that.
Oh, this letter, so there's, there's one from each of them, I don't know when Dave Requena, there's no date on Dave Requena's letter, I have no idea which came first, I asked last...
The very original one from Dave Requena.
Actually, no, the one from Dave Requena is dated May 29th, the one from Ken is April 17th.
Yes, but that took... That took a real long time for that denial letter, I mean, this was going before that, and that, and I think that's why Ken said that like that, maybe.
So, I don't see why we need to grant relief if it's allowed by right. Hello?
I wanna read this just again, and I'll make a motion.
Whatever you guys want.
I'm gonna make...
All right, is there any more discussion before we close the public hearing?
Well, I was saying something, but I don't recall now.
I'm sorry.
No, no, finish.
No, no, listen, we can discuss this after we close it, whether it's a variance special permit or not.
Sure.
All right, so let's make a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, it's closed, okay, now, now let's discuss this matter, Jen. Jen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I don't recall what I said, to be honest with you.
You, you were saying you don't want it, shouldn't be even special permit or variance?
Right.
I'm sorry.
Why does, I got distracted by...
I'm sorry.
By Ken's whispering to you while I was speaking, I mean, I, Ken, I forget his name now. Jim, remember when you forgot my name?
You had your name, whoops.
He, he, he forgot mine.
That's forgettable.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, yes, if it's allowed as of right, and this is a continued as of right use, why do we need to grant relief?
Okay, if you say so.
I mean, I'm...
No, I'm in 100% agreement with you, Jen.
I mean, if someone has something else to say, maybe I'm missing something.
No, I think you're right on the money, this, this parcel, or this property, has been utilized for this, over the years, for many years, and from what I'm seeing and everything like that, a lot of things were done to make the property really, really usable, and that's my feeling on this.
So, the denial letter from the commissioner has three bullets, it's, it's being denied under the following sections, and there's three bullets, starting from the third and working forward, the third one, Article 14, Section 1460, use variances, simply states that this board has the authority to grant a, a variance, okay, almost moot as we move forward. The second bullet says Article 3, Section 313, prohibited uses, a use which is not specifically authorized in a district and which is inconsistent with the intent of that district shall be prohibited. Well, that's incorrect, because he's got him in the wrong district.
Well, it's...
This is commercial, this is commercial CS zoned, he had him MR zoned.
It's incorrect, because he doesn't interpret this to be an ancillary component of motor vehicle service. If you were to go with Dave Requena's interpretation, towing wouldn't be allowed in the town of Wareham, period. There's towing in the town of Wareham.
Yeah, you don't see much of it. No, you're back, yeah, Don, you're on back.
I didn't buy property in a commercial district, so no.
Can I speak? I'd like to speak.
No, no, we're closed.
Public hearing is closed, nobody can speak.
You were offered the opportunity to speak, and you declined it.
Okay, and public hearing is closed. We'll, we'll see you in land court.
Well, you won't see me there, but you can go there.
Okay, keep going, sorry. Well, we are appealing it. Sir? Okay, that's, that's fine.
That's your right, sir, that's your right.
And you're disrupting this meeting, and mass general law allows us to call a police officer and have you removed from the room if you continue to disrupt this meeting, please stop disrupting this meeting. That's your warning.
That's true, all right.
And so, as I was saying, so that, the second, the prohibited use, it's not a prohibited use, he deemed this to be MR-30, it's not.
Okay, but unless I'm missing something, his...
That's the second bullet, what's the third?
Well, he actually did, and he, he's, he's, he's got it right, he's saying it's, he's saying it's C, uh, commercial.
CG zoning.
Yeah, no, the issue is that he's saying towing is not listed as an allowed use anywhere.
Okay.
That's what he's saying.
Okay.
Right, but to, so, that, which is kind of absurd, you would have said there's no towing in...
We disagree with him on that.
Yes, and so does Ken, and Ken had a very well-thought-out analysis of it, which makes a lot of sense, it's, you know, an allowed ancillary component of motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle service.
So going back to his first bullet, he's calling it a non-conforming use, it's not a non-con...
His, his letter made no sense to me, and I said it at the last meeting.
That's, that's the basis of, of the motion to overturn his decision and agree with Ken Buckland theory here, and my, my motion would be that we move to overturn the building inspector's decision to deny, and we tell the applicant that it's a use as of right by our zoning.
It's a, right, it's a, it's a, though, I would just further clarify, especially in the event that there's contemplated future litigation, that the, the, I would add to your motion, that my reasoning is that the building inspector's determination that this towing is not allowed in this district, and it's not specifically referenced in any other district, is incorrect, and that my finding would be that it is a proper ancillary use to motor vehicle services, which is allowed as of right in this particular district. which is allowed as of right in this particular district.
Yeah, I think my opinion on it is what he was-
No, no, you're all done, too.
You gotta know when to-
You're all done, too. When we closed it, we closed you, too.
All right, very well. So, let's make a motion, please.
So, between Jen and I, we've kinda made one.
Okay, but let Walter have the discussion.
Yeah, because I hear, I hear the butters, I hear their concern. If I vote on their behalf, he's already said he can do what he wants, and at one point we talked about privacy fencing and all of that, and-
That's not what's before us, right?
No, I know that. We're saying that the use-
Right.
For him to proceed with what he plans.
Right.
I understand that, but it was brought up by residents about the noise and all of that. So if we say this, he can do what he wants. There's no noise, he can do whatever he wants.
Correct.
Correct. If I vote yes.
If you vote yes, however, you're voting, do you agree, I do overturn the building, the building inspector, commissioner letter, or you don't? It's not about the noise, it's about the letter.
I understand, it's the letter. My interpretation is, is a little different, so I agree with what some, what the building inspector's saying. I mean, I went by the place, yes, it's clean and all of that.
Uh huh.
But I agree with what he's saying.
What part of it?
The part about where it's changed, where he says it was a nonconforming building all along.
It wasn't.
It wasn't.
That's, that's why I was saying, I went on and on last meeting, trying to get clarification from Ken. It's not, his, his, his letter is almost contradictory in some regards as well. He's, I usually follow his letters quite well, and there makes sense, this makes no sense. This is not a nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming use, it's not.
You understand what you're saying?
Yeah, I understand.
So it's, it's, um-
So the substance is wrong with that letter.
So the inspector is wrong, he didn't know-
He's wrong.
Misinterpreted, wrong.
On a number of accounts, yeah, more than, yeah.
And we're not misinterpreting wrong?
We're not?
No, we're not.
We know the, so our, our decision right now, either if we overturn the decision, it's dead, they keep going in their business, it's, it's been in business, everything. If we don't overturn, then we have to go to a different matter.
Right.
Then we go to a variance or special permit. So the first, as I hear from the members, they wanna overturn the building department, I mean, the building commissioner opinion.
Opinion, gotcha.
If we overturn it, that's it, it's over. If they don't, we go back to special permit or a variance, whatever the board feels. So let's, let's hear a motion.
Make a motion to overturn the building commissioner's decision.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I would second that motion with explanation.
Right, exactly. We're gonna need thorough explanation.
And my explanation is that I think that the building commissioner's explanation is wrong with regards to this being a pre-existing nonconforming use. I think that this has been a use as of right, as a motor vehicle service facility, and that the adding of towing is simply the adding of, of a allowed ancillary component to motor vehicle service. And on those, on that grounds, on those grounds, I would vote to overturn the building commissioner's denial.
All right, very well. I'd like to add that the use hasn't been abandoned for over two years. It's, it's the most, been abandoned for, I mean, disrupted for six months, right? How long's it been disrupted?
Well, since the last guy was in there, which was, I believe his lease was up in February.
Okay, under, under two years. Anyone else like anything to that motion? Okay, do I have a, so a second on that? That's Jen with her comments, right?
Mm-huh.
So Jen, Jen seconded with comments.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the, what's the new lady there, Nadja, the new? What's her name?
Sonia, I think.
Sonia. I hope Sonia get this pretty well. We need it written perfectly how Attorney Kendrick stated it. Okay, so all in favor, signifying by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go to a new business, and I guess this is reserved for topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate, and we're gonna go to the gentleman here. Sir?
Eric Lintala.
Mr.?
Mr. Lintala.
Mr. Lintala, wanna come forward? You name for the record first, an address.
Eric Lintala, live at 15 Squirrel Island Road. I'm gonna butter to the property.
No, before we go forward, you cannot mention this property in any case.
Okay.
You could have any clarification of a question, but you cannot discuss this matter. Okay, so what's your, what you like to discuss?
Well, it's, there's been a number of meetings where this has come up, and it's-
What this?
Building on an unbillable lot, parcel A, to corner Ferring Hill, and-
Can't discuss this matter, I just told you, you can't.
All right, okay, then, it's just, you haven't been able to make a vote on, on a certain subject for quite a few meetings now. It keeps getting kicked down the road, and I understand there's some unusual circumstances. So if there's unusual circumstances, I would think the committee would try to make an effort to, whether the, I don't know what you, substitute voters or something or other, because to have this, there's more than, to have this passed by default, there's a lot of issues.
You're going back to that case.
No, I know, I'm not gonna talk about it.
Let me explain to you how it works.
It's, the vote is important.
Right.
To vote on this is important. That's all, that's, it's very important.
Let me explain to you how zoning board works. Zoning board is a board of five members in the town of Wareham. Other towns are three, some towns are seven.
Right.
And any, any special permit or variance, it needs four out of five votes. So if they, if the person, we, four people says yes, it passes. Three people, it doesn't pass. It's the, State of Massachusetts give the applicant, give him rights not to open the case with four members. So he has the right to say, I don't wanna open my case with four members, he wants five. In his mind, to secure at least four, which he needs four. The problem is, in this matter, I can sit in the case because I didn't sit in it before, so I can jump back in. Mrs. Devenese, she has a conflict, she can sit on it. So the app, on it, I'm going, I'm making the same mistake you did. An applicant, an applicant on a different case has the right to five. So in a certain case, he needs five members. I don't wanna conflict, say, do the same thing.
Any case.
In any case, he has the right to pick, say, I want my case with five members.
All right.
We always ask people, we short in, in boards, with more board members, we always say on, publicly, we always tell friends, ask friends, town officials, selectmen, we need board members, just like Bob came in and Walter, people ask him to come in, which is great, I appreciate it. So I say it again, publicly on TV, people listening, we are short members. So, when we have more members, in cases when somebody can't sit, there's a conflict, the other member can sit, can sit in. And unfortunately, in cases where there's not enough member, a case get constructively granted.
That's understandable.
And the problem is, when you're in the town, somehow me, him, her, do a, do a business with someone. So some, so a lot of times, nobody could sit in that case because, and you have to be from the town to be in a board, and you work in a town, so a lot of times, there's conflicts.
I understand that, too. When, under circumstances, on, on a matter of taking a vote, then, you know, all votes are important, all issues brought up are important, I would say, for sure, in front of the town, that you need to vote on. And knowing that certain cases are just continued, 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 and it's gonna reach a point now where the general public hasn't been able even speak about it.
Correct.
And it's gonna pass by default. Now, is that right?
I'd like to say-
That's the law.
I just would like to say something.
She's an attorney, she's good at that.
I don't think, I, I understand, and I would be very frustrated if I were in a butter and I wanted to oppose and have, speak my mind on a project. However, we are all volunteers here. We rely on the, to have a full board, we rely on the selectmen to appoint members of the community. In order for the selectmen to appoint members of the community, members of the community have to come forward. And so that's part of the problem, is it's, as it should be, we should have enough members so that if there is a conflict and/or someone has personal obligations that prevent them from being present, that there's enough flexibility so this should not happen. So what I would urge you to do is to voice your concerns to the selectmen about the need to expeditiously identify additional members for this board. We certainly want to be here, and we have no desire to be inefficient for the community in any way. I can assure you of that. I wouldn't be volunteering, volunteering my time for the last, I don't know, four plus years if that weren't the case. So, but, you know, like I said, it's, it's a matter of people needing to step up and, and volunteer to help out.
And, and your hard work is appreciated, believe me. Volunteer work, and I've been to many meetings, and I've seen a lot of things go on, and it is difficult, and a lot of decisions one needs to make. So, but my, my other question is, knowing that when this has happened, and it's an obvious situation, that there's always gonna be a shortage because of, of unusual circumstances between a couple of the members, then is it my job, then, to make sure there's a quorum here? I mean, wouldn't you solicit, can you solicit from another committee? I don't know, I'm sorry, I just-
No, it can be two, and two boards.
On this board, it's, it's not your job, but it, but you do have the right. If something passes by default, you still have the right of appeal.
Right.
So, there is a level of fairness.
So if I, if this ever came to that, you still have to vote on it, do you not?
No. Then it goes off, and then it becomes a court matter.
Oh, okay, well.
You appeal the decision, and you go, I think, to Superior Court?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, unfortunate.
You go to the Superior Court and say, hey, look, this guy got the, let's say somebody applied for a, a lot that you felt shouldn't be built on, or to tear a house down that you think shouldn't be torn down, or to put a fence up that you think, and they win by default. You can go to the court and say, this guy won by default, and these are the reasons why I think he shouldn't have won. Then the court can make a decision. So that's where fairness comes into play. There's always another layer.
Unfortunately, then, I just wish it wouldn't have to go that far where it could be taken care of here, because there's been many meetings on this issue, and it just has never been able to be voted on.
The court wishes it got finished here, too. Because they don't wanna hear it either.
I'm sure of that.
It's frustrating to us when it happens as well. I'm particularly frustrated.
Yeah.
Well, we just hope from now until then, somebody come forward and become a board member.
So if you know you're gonna be short on board members, so how does the word go out?
There've been advertisements.
Friends, friends like Walter and Robert, he knew through people, like Robert, I think Jim reached out, said you wanna be aboard. I reached to Jim back in the day. Veronica reached to Walter, we need members. You can reach to a friend, say, hey, why don't you become a board member?
And I would just, I would just wanna add that, if, if not for members of this board reaching out to people that they know personally and asking them to come, we would be even more short, because despite-
Way more.
Despite advertisements to the community, to come volunteer for these boards, ZBA needs members.
Conservation is short, too.
Conservation needs-
They're short now, they need members.
No one comes up. So if these people wouldn't have reached out to people that they know to say, hey, we're, we're in need of help, it would be a catastrophe. So.
So just a sticky, wicked little situation, I guess.
I agree with you, sir. I agree with you.
The problem, they pay us so much money. Nobody wants to be, nobody wants to be a member.
And I hear, I hear, I know everybody wants to get voted on, and that's one of the reasons I try to commit to be here.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, it's appreciated that you're all always here.
At least I, they know, okay, I'm here, but there's gonna come a time that some could come out.
Oh, absolutely.
My, my parents, who live in another state, 1700 miles away, had made arrangements to come here and were renting a place in the Berkshires, and that's the reason I cannot be here. So, and, and I apologize for the inconvenience, but I think that I afforded the opportunity to spend time with my family, who I don't get an opportunity to see every day.
That's understandable, yeah, because on the 14th, I unfortunately have jury duty, and hopefully that'll get canceled so I can be here. That's understandable, I just, you know, I just wanted to, you know-
I understand, sir.
We can't discuss the situation, but I would hope that we could vote, it would be a quorum so we could discuss the situation.
I understand.
So, we'll just keep our fingers crossed, then, I guess.
I understand your frustration.
All right.
I appreciate you explaining.
I appreciate it, too.
On a different subject, I was in West Wareham recently, and I had an opportunity to make a delivery on Squirrel Island Road, and I noticed that the town has done a heck of a job of improving that road.
They did a darn good job. Yeah, we've, we've very much welcomed, or, you know, well, thanked them for all their work. I mean, I had one, they even brought pizza for them all one time when they were grading. It's been an issue on that road, it was, it's been tough, but boy, what they've done is wonderful right now, so.
So, it's just nice to know that the town is still trying to work to the benefit of it.
Absolutely, yeah, and the people on Squirrel, you know, we've become a good tight group of people, and we're very thankful for everything the town has done, for the road and all the other issues, and, you know, the solar field that was defeated not long ago, and now houses are being built, and that's fine. Anyhow, so I can't talk anymore about that.
No, that's all right, and, and thank you for being patient and sticking here and, you know, and doing things in the right order.
I appreciate what you folks are doing, too, believe me.
How do people jump up and yell and scream and interrupt? It doesn't do anything.
I've seen some interesting things here. It's, it's been, it's been educational, kinda getting involved with what goes on in the town at a lot of the meetings in the past few years now, and, yeah, believe me, I do, I do thank you for what you do here. It's pretty tough at times. So we'll leave it at that, and hopefully we will get the votes at some point here, that everybody can be here, maybe, or enough people.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We have an extra seat.
All right, let's go back to, for the minutes that we tabled.
Back to the agenda.
Minutes for July 10.
I did get a chance to review them in between all these conversations. I find them to be close enough to accurate to accept as presented and move to accept